Well, we're back after a bit of a break due to technical difficulties where our computer guys had to deal with the blue screen of death and we finally gave up on it. So now, we are going to record this and, forget the live, still having a great lively conversation with our panelists here. We left off with Marcus saying, "Hopes and dreams," which is such a great place to leave off. We want to talk about what we're going to do to make the best of what we've got now, which is five commissioners elected by five districts. In fact, when we do put this together, we'll go ahead and put that map in there that shows the five districts so people can look and see where they're going to be, kind of get some idea of what it looks like. Marcus, was there anything else that you wanted to add?
The only other thing I'd add is whether you support it or not, I think the redistricting commissioners did a fantastic job in working together and I think that that is kind of, you know, when you talk about hopes and dreams, they came together and worked together to try and, you know, iron out something that they thought was best for the county going forward. So I think that deserves some credit.
Okay. So while we're on the subject of districts, I'm going to go to Mike McLaughlin really quick instead and talk about those districts. Your position with the county is in charge of elections, so now you've got to set up for a whole new set of districts. How's that going? Are there some challenges, some things people should know to look for when the ballots come out?
When the redistricting commissioner redistricts, the county commissioners, they followed existing precinct lines for the most part, so there's very few splits in there. So we're easily being able to put those precincts into the proper districts. What we're doing now is redoing all the precincts to match the splits and then with the legislative districts and that. So we're combining the county and the state legislative and putting all those maps and precincts together to redraw those lines.
It seems like there'd be a lot of opportunities to maybe misalign it. At some point, if somebody gets their ballot and they think that they're in the wrong place, there's a process to find out if you're in the right place? Is there something?
They can call us. I mean, the maps are online. We hopefully will have those available. The drafts will be April 1st and then we'll have the finals on May 2nd.
Okay. So they'll be up for a few weeks before the candidates have to file?
I mean, we'll definitely have questions because in the primary election, it'll be normal, they're voting on the commissioners by district, but in the general election, there's going to be calls as, "Where's my other county commissioners?"
Yeah.
It doesn't matter, it happens all the time, even if there's, you know, "Where's this race on my ballot?"
I would honestly just hope that you're flooded with people who are actually paying attention and want to vote. That would...
It's just part of it.
Okay.
We get in the city of Spokane and everything that way too, so we're used to it and it'll be fine.
Okay.
A question I had on the existing three county commissioners and the five new districts and where they, their principal abode, as the RCW says, where they live, did they all end up in different districts?
I believe so.
I think they did.
I think they did. I think they lived scattered apart enough that that actually worked out that way.
On how that happened and back to the existing, because everybody's starting off scratch, I mean, whether you're a two-year or a four-year commissioner to start with, it'll depend on where you're at. So you've got some existing ones?
If I think is what they, they just numbered them one through five in a sort of a circular motion, then one, three, and five are going to be a two-year term and two and four are going to be a four-year term. Is the way they did it, so.
Because Mike's going to get calls, obviously, where, let's say that for, I have a long-running commissioner and the district changes and I see two new names that I've never heard of before, they're going to call Mike's office and they're going to go, "Where is so-and-so?"
Yeah.
And he'll explain, "Well, they don't, they're not in your district anymore." It'll be a learning curve.
Mike, we might have you come back on Spokane Talks Media after the maps have been out for a month and you can maybe answer a whole bunch of the most common questions for people.
Okay.
Okay, well, we'll make a date of that. Scott, I was going to turn to you with your background with Washington State Association of Counties as well as currently serving as a county commissioner. One of the questions that I ask when I interview candidates on Meet the Candidate is, "Tell me how you see the job description," because it's an opportunity to figure out if somebody who's running for Water District thinks they're going to fix the Federal Reserve system, you know. So what should people be expecting if they are thinking of running or if they are essentially interviewing candidates for this job?
You know, I always, people ask about, I always encourage them, "Hopefully you don't have an agenda." Many, most people do have some piece that they're passionate about or things like that, but that's, when they, when you come in, you're going to have to do some homework, do some homework about what I spent, I spent a whole year with my predecessor, I was able to do that, to see what happened. But there are so many people just come in and, you know, they've been to one meeting and they barely know where their precinct is and stuff like that. So that's, you know, I encourage people to just come in open-minded, get a handle on what's going on, you know, inside of the county and inside of your area, you know, know what that is and what the boundaries are and who, what are the businesses there and what are the, you know, do you have rural, do you have larger businesses, farms, you know, things like that? And the metro districts are going to be a little bit, a little bit different. That's the piece that we're geographically, well, they're not all the same everywhere. We've got a county like Adams County, they're, all of them have a piece of Othello. Or in Whitman County where all three districts have a piece of Pullman and they all come down and different, different things like that. But back to, I think that's the one thing, you're going to have a lot to learn. Don't think you know everything when you get there, but bring the things you, you're passionate about, show your passion because people will, people will see that. And when you continue to talk about the people and the things that are, the betterment of the people in your area, in your county, that's, I think, an important piece.
I think that's good advice for anybody who's thinking of running because I think when the maps do come out, there's people will, will start looking and thinking about this, but it really does take a lot of preparation. So what about, what would be the first three things you think, I think you had to do? Actually, Kate had a good suggestion, a good comment while we were waiting for the technical difficulties, which was, you walked in and you had a three-month deadline facing you to draw the urban growth boundaries when you walked into Spokane County.
Yes, that was when the legislature had mandated growth management on our county. It had stalled, honestly, and we had a very short window to draw the growth management, the urban growth area boundary, which was highly controversial, understandably so, because inside was going to be urban, dense population, outside was going to be rural and there was no in-between anymore. So very impactful thing that we had to decide and because it hadn't, we kind of got off on lock, not me, but they were locked on it, we were down to a very tight timeframe or the state would come in and draw it for us.
So you were faced with a very urgent issue when you first walked in?
Very urgent. And, but we worked through it. It was a lot of meetings, a lot of good staff people, commissioners, one commissioner would take a look at a map, propose some things, then, you know, another, the other staff members would work that through and then we'd talk about it in public meetings, which is a very important thing. Many, many public meetings about it. So looking at the big policy issues that, we were confronted with that, but every commissioner is going to walk in and every city councilman and every legislator is going to walk in to big issues. That's just the nature of our society and you have to be mentally prepared for that. And I think Scott brought up some great points. An important thing to emphasize is I would encourage people, if and when they get elected or maybe before, they figure out exactly what a county commissioner does. Because to me, number one was constituent work, right? It's solving your problems. If you don't want to solve people's problems, please don't run because you're there to help them. At least that's how I felt and my colleagues who were there at the same time I felt that was too. And number two, you better like numbers a lot because your next biggest thing is the budget and...
I believe you said budget and budget and budget were the top three constituents.
And, and that is right, that's proper. You're spending other people's money and it was always a very important thing, you're spending other people's money. I don't care how you spend your money, Randy, I don't care how you spend your money, but when I'm spending other people's money, you better be really careful. And so that means I think you better be prepared or for good government, you need to take a lot of time and know what's being spent and how. And the other thing is understand that then you're, you know, have priorities, think through your priorities because when you walk through that door, you will be pulled and pulled and pulled and pulled. And if you don't have a center, you will be off-center so fast that you won't even know what happened. So have a center. Know, know what you're committed to. And those are just some hints from me. Oh, one last thing is you could do this even before in understanding what county government does, but certainly when you get elected, and this advice was given to me as probably the number one best piece of advice before I was, after I was elected, before I took office, go spend time with every single department. It takes time. It took me three months, but I went to every single department, every single department personally. They didn't come to me, I went to them. And learn what they do in an open mind and you have to build those bridges because, believe me, during the election, you're probably going to say things, I said things that like, "Ew, may be pretty offensive to Vicky Dalton, sorry, Vicky," or whomever else, and then you got to repair those unfortunately. You may not even say them intentionally, but you do. I know there are some people who, they tell me today, said, "Oh man, we did not like you." But then they found out that if you work with them, hey, maybe she's not so bad. So that's what I would suggest.
Well, and that's a bit of the beyond politics is remembering that everybody who is, who runs for elected office and who was elected, if they volunteered to be a target in a way for all those verbal barbs and all that stress and frustration.
That's one last thing I would say and you've probably, everybody who's elected knows this, and it's even worse now because, you know, I'm a commissioner for, well, for 17 years, so I didn't have to deal with the social media stuff. But even then, be prepared before you run, you have zero privacy, especially a county commissioner. I mean, these guys, they go off to Limpian, you know, I'm just kidding, Marcus, but seriously, when you're, Scott, like, you're there on the ground every day, they see you all the time and when you're standing in line at Costco, someone's going to come up. "Kate, hi, I just came in from cleaning the barn, I'm sorry I look like this." "Oh, you look okay."
Sit down.
Yeah. And, but that's your job. And if you don't want that, then don't run.
It's a good point on this, this social media, we're experiencing, we have even a number of first-term legislators and there is a bit of an exodus and some of them are, you know, directly, you know, they weren't expecting the pressures, the new pressures in today's world and it's tough on a lot of folks. And so that's, it's a good point. It's a changing environment, too.
It does make being elected official a much tougher job, I think, than it used to be.
Just a quick one, your first day in, your first day in office, I remember mine, I went in, big snowstorm, ice storm, it was just crazy things, powers out, all this stuff. I go in, our chairman can't make it to the meeting. So, so I replaced the vice chair, so I became then the chair. I'm walking in, I've been in this meeting five minutes, I said, "Well, let's have the Pledge of Allegiance, let's get this kicked off right." So we do that and then the next thing, I declare a state of emergency for the county, the first, very first thing, in the first 10 minutes I was in office. So things, things can happen. I mean, it's, there's a lot of, a lot of things can happen, a lot of things will be across your plate. But it is, it is very...
Well, I think what you've, what you've both brought up is it's a lot of management. You really are managing, you're managing the budget, you're managing the snowstorm, you're managing the departments and just trying to get operations going.
The one cool thing I'll say about being a local elected, I feel like I'm bashing Marcus, but I'm not, but it is a cool thing. If you really want to impact, I mean, people have, "Oh, I want to be a congressman," or, "Oh, I want to be governor," or, "Oh, I want to be a legislator, state senator, state representative." Really, if you want to impact in a very serious way the services that citizens feel and see and every day, be a county commissioner because those services matter. You're the, you're the people responsible to getting the cops on the street and the roads plowed and the roads fixed. And to me, everything after that was gravy, right? But those are, that was, were my big priorities. But you can impact people's lives in a very real way. Not that legislators don't, because you do, but we deliver the services on the ground.
And you get to explain it in Costco.
There you go.
So about those services, Mike, I had asked you about what was business looking for? From a business perspective, what do you want out of county government? And you had a really good answer.
Well, yeah, I mean, for, you know, I think our day-to-day operations are affected probably more directly by things that are going on in the legislature and things that are going on, like we happen to be, you know, in the city of Spokane, you know, by, by the city council. But that being said, you know, county government plays, you know, an important role in what we do and the lives of all of our employees, a lot of our suppliers, things like that. What we're really looking forward, or looking for from, from the county commissioners and government in general is predictability, is stability, you know, so that we actually understand kind of the rules of the game and what we're working with. And I think the most difficult thing for a business is to see significant variations from, you know, kind of one elected body to the next or from one administration to the next, where you're kind of being whip-sawed back and forth and you really don't know, you know, what the future holds. So for us, it's that, that predictability, that stability just, just is very, very important. It allows us to make decisions because most of the decisions we're making are going, you know, we're making them, you know, with a time window of months and years usually, not, not just in that particular moment.
And that might be somewhat similar, Randy, to what you would say, I suspect, running a farm and ranch operation in the county, you've got to make decisions that are going to affect the land for years, but do you see any upside or downside to moving to these districts where, I don't have, I wish I had the map in front of me, where maybe rural issues, are there concerns about rural issues versus urban issues cropping up?
Yeah, I have kind of, you know, run it through my thought process a little bit and, you know, I would say with the new district, agriculture is going to be a pretty large business in the part of the county where I live. And I would think that the person that's elected to represent my district would maybe listen to me a little bit more, be more focused. But then to take that thought process a little bit farther then, when the five commissioners then are in a meeting and they're trying to decide an issue that may impact me, I might be less represented. A commissioner from the city would, I would think, would give less attention to issues that affect me. That's kind of, kind of the way I've looked at it. And then as far as the decisions that we make on the farm, I'm fourth generation, we've been living in the same part of Spokane County since the 1880s and our intention is to turn the farm over to the next generation in a condition that's better than we received it. We're always looking for something to be more conservation-minded and improve upon the soil and so forth. And so, yeah, we're, we're really thinking long-term and so, you know, like Kate was talking about with the growth management and determining what are the urban areas, what are the ag areas and so forth, we are obviously getting more and more neighbors all the time. That's a concern and, you know, I try to, try to keep an open mind and welcome them to the neighborhood. But I also am quite concerned when they may do something that impacts the way that I farm and I feel that, you know, they may not understand farming very well. I was reading an article just this morning where the author of the article was talking about Washington State and they were saying that farmers now are less than 1% of the state population, but yet we are the second-largest industry. And so there's very few of us and so we're, we're pretty outnumbered.
Yeah, I think that's always going to be concern is finding that voice for agriculture and I, because I know that I talk about that all the time since that's our, that's our primary income for our family as well. So let me see, where, where shall we go from that conversation? How about, we do want to make sure that this is an opportunity for more people to be heard. Jerry, let me go to you for a question on, as a CEO of a county, you know, for Spokane County has one, I know Lincoln County doesn't, and the commissioners basically do that, but you were delegated a certain amount of authority to run those departments. Do you see some advantages to, and you're, you're the former CEO, so to the current and future CEOs of having input from five commissioners that might be more in tune or do you think that might be more chaos?
I don't, I don't think the, the success of the CEO isn't really dependent on how many commissioners they have, just like a city administrator, you know, might have different councils. The biggest thing other than the budget, like Kate says, is you have a lot of department heads, non-elected department heads, that they don't spend a great deal of time with their commissioners, whether it's three or five, so they look to the CEO and that's where they, they, they sense the culture, they sense the direction of where we're going and stuff. So you have to be, it's, it's going to be a little more challenging to make sure that you're in tune with five than there was three, but it's still pretty much the same process. One of the things that I, going to Marcus, the hope and the dream, I do have one hope because one of the things I was most excited about in the last 10 years was, and I noticed this when I was working for the city, the county came to, the county as a whole came to a realization that everyone was their constituent. So if, if somebody called from down at Cheney or Deer Park, you didn't put any more or less effort if somebody called from the city of the valley or Millwood or whatever. Your services, you're the regional government, okay? And you're, you're the only regional government, okay? My hope is that this doesn't get lost. The expansion at the West Plains with S3, R3 and the city and the county saying, "We're going to quit fighting over turf, I won't annex you, you, you know, we can all win, we don't have to win it all or lose it all, we can both win some of it," right? When we go to the new form of government, I hope it doesn't become centric to where you lose that momentum. In other words, Kate made a good thing about being centered, I'm hopefully these people that run because the pool will be bigger, obviously, you'll have new faces that you probably wouldn't have if there was three districts, is that I'm not going to be so focused on my section that I forget we're the regional government and all of the folks that live here are our constituents. That's what I hope isn't lost in that.
I think some of the idea is that there were, folks will just be very cannibalistic and just fight for their, their district and, you know, I'm hopeful that people will want to do right by the whole county and yes, elections matter and at times people will talk about how they can deliver for their particular constituency, but like, we don't, a lot of times I get, as a third district legislator in the city, I get asked, like, "Why do you care about, you know, primary care in rural areas?" Because if the counties around us can't thrive, then Spokane won't thrive, right? And so you hope, you hope that there's some of that coming together and it doesn't become... But Scott, off-camera, when we were talking, brought up some good points about, you know, the partisan nature and, yeah, we've got to all recognize that and...
Yeah, we're trying to get past that, but that sounds like a good thing to include when we do a forum with candidates is to ask, "How do you see establishing that culture from the county commissioners?" And, and looking for candidates who, who are more expressive about having a passion for seeing this work for the whole region instead of just, "I'm going to get what I can for my district." So that would be something we'd hope voters would be looking for.
That is a, I mean, yeah, that is a fear that I see from looking in to, that that could happen and it's, it's tough enough with three, just three commissioners in some of the counties that are trying to not make that work together for the better of the, because we have, we have, we have a lot of counties where all the commissioners get along, a lot of things get done, but that's not in every, that's not in every county in the state of Washington. They have 39 counties.
Well, you get to, yeah, you get to see that with WASAC is...
And, yeah, there is some, there is some battles.
So what are some characteristics, a couple of characteristics of the most functional county families? What do they share? That focus, I presume that focus on, "We're going to serve the whole county" would be a, would be a big thing.
You know, and I started looking around at this particular, so, you know, over my 14 years, there's, there's only three county commissioners in all of eastern Washington that've served longer than I have now. So I've watched some of that turnover and, and some of the ones that have been there, and we've had, watched some really, really, really good commissioners that you just totally envy how they do and how they, and they're able to, it usually takes one of the three that's, that's stronger. I mean, that's just how it most times works. And if that person has that ability to bring the other two with them along with things, you know, and still, and take their, the good things they bring to the table and work that into the county, those are the ones, not the ones that, we have a couple now that are even, even the same party and the same guys you think they would be and it's just like this and they have problems in their counties and the electives don't get along and all those, I mean, come to Lincoln County, I mean, we just, of course, when I got elected, I knew everyone. I knew everyone by their first name.
Well, you sold everybody their tires, so...
Yeah, and over the years, and I lived there, so it was easy, I mean, it was, it was easy, but again, I think Jerry talked about, the people, you know, all the electives, Kate talked about that, you got to get to know all the people that, and what their job's in your county because you, you don't, you can't run it, it takes a lot of people to run a county. And, and so, you know, find out what they do, they're, they're strong, how can you help them? You're not always going to get along, I mean, it just, but you've got to strive to do that because if you're not getting along, nothing gets done and the people will notice that and that's not good, that's not good for anybody.
And that goes beyond just a label of Democrat or Republican. I mean, you know, honestly, I think there's more partisanship at a state level because that's the nature of how it's organized. And local government, particularly even in county government, it's not organized that way, at least in, I can't speak to all the counties. But it is though about where, you know, what is important to you and your priorities and what you're willing to give and take and not. At some point, you have to know what your, your boundaries are and then how to, you know, get beyond that or not. And so, I think that's...
My first four years, I had to serve on a couple of committees with Bonnie and, you know, DR and we, we got along, I mean, I, we had some great conversations, we definitely agreed on a lot more than we disagreed on and it was fun to listen to her, you know, you go to the meetings and you're, "What's going on in Spokane County?" And you'd get a few things, different things that I might not get from a couple of the other commissioners. So that's, that's, it's always good.
And the other thing to that point is, you have to remember, and this is definitely in the legislature too, I'm sure, is that not everything you do is partisan, not everything, in fact, the vast majority of the stuff is just like, I remember, this is a true story, then my first time I ran for reelection, I was accused of voting more with John Ross Kelly than I did with Phil Harris. So being who I am, I went and compiled the record and it was not true. We voted, we had in that first four years, I think it was like four or 5,000 things we voted on, four or 5,000, and it came down to like 50 things where any of us didn't vote the same. I mean, usually there's consensus on almost everything, but the tough stuff, there's going to be some tough discussion and honestly, isn't that the way it should be? I mean, you need to have that robust discussion without getting ugly, in my view.
We do have a couple people here that if, do you have a question that you'd like to ask?
And I will say, as far as paying attention to people, I'm going to go pay attention to some eight-year-olds playing soccer, so I have to...
I forgot, you stayed a little later.
Yeah, but I really appreciate the conversation and thank you for the invitation.
Go coach, Marcus.
Thanks, Mark. Good to see you, Mark.
Thank you.
Well, there was the person that was...
Okay. I was to stick around, go ahead, let's do this.
Where do you want me to go? Because I'm not mine.
Right up there.
Thanks for the opportunity. I'm Ann Murphy, president of the Local League of Women Voters here in Spokane. And Marcus, I would, just some of the things in looking forward 10 years, I know we're not even into the first year yet... the first year yet, but looking at the RCW that was created, and I did look it up, there are some dates in there that specifically say 2021. And, you know, I think there needs to be a plan to go back to that legislation that would then continue the process. And so I'm just, just want to be, look and be part of that. I think there were some other things in the bill that would help the whole process move even more smoothly than it ultimately did, so.
I appreciate that, and I think a lot of times we pass legislation and it's iterative process and technical updates, et cetera. So I'd love to work with you all and I think part of the implementation, you know, particularly with the redistricting process, et cetera, like if there's ways that we can improve it, and then there's probably some drafting errors. We were so, so interested in, you know, making the process work for a time set. And I got to tell you, I had some colleagues that wanted that to go into effect immediately. And they didn't share the same letter that I do as far as the partisan piece. I think we did a good thing by putting it, whether you agree with or not, putting on the cycle of the redistricting process. But I would love to work with you and others, and the folks that were really rolling up their sleeves to see where did we make some, could we improve the process?
And another thing that I think might be helpful in looking at, I mean, I think it was you that mentioned diversity in your earlier remarks, and this would be both for the county committee that does redistricting in another 10 years, as well as the state commission and work on even more diverse voices on those committees that get, move out the D's and R's and make some nonpartisan voices because we have a great deal of independent people as well. So just look at, look at some reforms that could be made. But I know that's a ways down the road, we've got to get this group elected first.
I got to tell you though, I appreciate your forward thinking, I mean.
Well, we were just trying to think of things while the whole process was still fresh, fresh in the mind of having just been through it, so.
No.
But thank you for all of your work on that and working with the citizen group that was part of help, you know, moving this forward as well. It wasn't all just Marcus, so, thank you, Marcus.
You got it.
All right, now, off to coach.
Thank you, thank you.
Go team.
Go team.
Okay. I'm looking at the questions we had talked about a little bit beforehand, and it really comes down to land use. And I know that one of the, one of the things we put up on the board as we were brainstorming, waiting for the computer to reboot, is that not only are you the legislative branch, the county commissioners, but you are the executive, and land use issues are a huge piece of that. Jerry, you're nodding, is there a comment you want to make to follow up on that?
Probably other than law enforcement, the impact in, you know, roads and sewers and things like that, it probably is the most contentious issue that a county commissioner, or if you're in the city, because you can have zoning issues too, people pay attention when you're messing with their property or somebody's property around them. They become very engaged very quickly. And it's always challenging and, you know, someone's always going to feel like they didn't, you know, get everything they wanted in a land use action. But, you know, we live in a state where we've got urban growth areas and we've got conservation areas and things like that, and we're growing quickly and faster than a lot of people think. And land use is always going to be one of the main topics that any commissioner deals with.
I know that was, Randy, that was one of your issues with, I know that I see as I drive out across the West Plains, a lot of places that didn't make it to that fourth or fifth generation, and now they've been sold into lots, and here's these shop houses, the shouses going up, scattered in through fields. Are you seeing that in the South Spokane County?
Oh, yeah, yeah. We see a lot of, a lot of new houses out in our area and smaller acreages that go with it. And I think that times, you know, there's people that move out there that they have 10 acres and their house and yard might use up an acre, and they don't really know what to do with the other nine. And, you know, sometimes their weeds will create problems for our crops. Kate and I were talking earlier about exporting hay. And we've had problems with weeds blowing into our hay and then making it so that it doesn't fit the standards for export.
Those, my complaint about the folks that move out there is the ones that don't realize they're in a volunteer fire district and it doesn't occur to them that perhaps somebody needs to step up and participate. So let's see, any, we're kind of closing in on the end, any last comments, Randy, you had one?
Can I ask a question?
You can ask a question.
What does it look like from a manager's perspective with the number of commissioners? Does it make any differences, any changes as far as, you mentioned sensing the direction that the commissioners are wanting you to go?
I think it'll be, you're going to have to spend a little more time than you would getting to know the other two and coordinate. One of the things Kate made a very good statement about, all the times that they vote together, the goal of any CEO is when you leave the board, you get a three to nothing vote. And now it's going to be, the goal is to get a five to nothing vote, not only for the particular issue, but it influences the relationship with the board. If you have four to one, four to one, four to one, or three to one, or two to one, like it used to be, it causes some concerns and you lose some of that culture that I was talking about. Every department head and manager at the county, and Mike, correct me if I'm wrong, right now is watching this, like, what's going to happen to us? What is this going to actually do to me? And the CEO, and the county has a very good CEO, Scott Simmons is a very bright, good, hardworking person, I'm sure that he's working on that right now. Steady the ship, it's going to be okay, you know, we have to work hard, don't hide under your desk, you know, and hunker down or anything like that, and that's not what we're here for. But I, it's going to be a challenge to have five other than three.
One of the challenges is the building that the Spokane County Commissioners Office and Hearing Rooms is in was very, very specifically designed to work for a three-member commission, and there isn't really room without a lot of rearranging.
The board is at a point, I think, now though, to make a, they need to make a political decision about where they're going to sit. We had, we had plans, or we still have plans, the county still has plans, that accommodate all five of them in the Public Works Building. We moved family law over to the courthouse to be next to their folks finally, instead of spread all over the campus. But that's still a decision, they may choose not to use that particular floor plan, but it could accommodate them, five.
So any other closing remarks here, and I'm going to let our.
You know, when I talked about, you know, having a Jerry Gimmel is, I mean, the guy's a master at what he does and with the people that, I mean, it's fun to watch someone that really articulates that. And that, and that is going to be very important with Scott, to get the, trying to get on board with everybody and trying to put that together, because it's, like, we have Shelley Johnston, our auditor, who just retired after 40 years in the courthouse and stuff, she, which I've known her since we were in high school, she, I walked in there as a brand-new commissioner, the first thing she said, "My job is to keep you out of trouble." And that's really some of the big part of that is you.
The CEO's job is to keep the board out of trouble.
And kind of keep them in their lane and a huge education piece. I mean, that's, I mean, you have to rely on that education that's there to do that, so.
And I agree, if you Scott's a great degree and Jerry did well, he wasn't the CEO that I have, but CEO we had was terrific as well. But you're elected as a leader. People don't elect the staff, they elect the county commissioner. And whomever is elected should never forget that. They should never advocate their responsibility to the staff. That's my view, that's Kate McCaslin talking. You have a responsibility, not just to the people who voted for you, but to everyone. And you should never advocate that to the staff. One last thing that I'll encourage everybody who eventually gets elected is, because this was kind of a shock to me, I will say, I came from a small business. When you walk in, don't you ever think for one minute that people aren't watching you. And what you do in that first day, in that first week, in that first month will make all the difference in how everyone thinks you're going to be. You have one shot, really, and you better make it a good one. And if you go in and spend a bunch of money and buy new furniture and move everybody over to the Public Works Office and spend hundreds of thousands of dollars, hmm, that might send a message. So I would just urge caution along those lines, too.
One opportunity to make a first impression. So Mike, was there something that you didn't get to say?
No, no, other than my hope is that as we kind of embark on this journey to five county commissioners, that, you know, one of the, one of the big benefits that I think and what I'm most hopeful of is that, you know, there's going to be additional, you know, diversity of opinion that can help us make better decisions in the long run, you know, those different perspectives from the different, you know, regions, I think, are important. And I think it's okay to have differences of opinion. You know, I'm just hopeful that we've talked about partisanship versus nonpartisanship. You know, I'm kind of sick and tired of saying this because everybody kind of rolls their eyes, you know, but I think what I'm really looking for and what business really wants is productive government that works together to really create an environment that allows, you know, the people that live in the boundary that's being governed to thrive and to do well and to take care of their families and businesses to grow and there to be economic opportunity. And I'm just hopeful that we actually see that occur as opposed to, you know, what might have happened in the past or the perception that people have of what was going on in the past.
All right. Well, I'm going to turn that over to Mike Gavrecci because that's actually your hope as well.
Oh, yeah. Well, you know, thank you for being here. After I listened to all of you, I'm glad I have a job and I don't have to run for, you know, for commissioner because it seems like it's a challenge. My name is Mike Gavrecci. I'm an Iranian-American, migrated here over 37 years ago as a refugee. And the purpose of, you know, I want to sponsor, you know, events like this is to promote unity, freedom, and democracy. And where I come from, you know, that was very important to me, the freedom and democracy. And I'm sure you know, there is no freedom and democracy where I come from. So last time, we ended the first episode of Beyond Politics by two words. And those two words were appreciating America. I was talking to a friend of mine a few months ago, and that's what he told me. He said, you know, appreciate America. And I know what he meant by saying that. I want to give you an example of, you know, why we should appreciate, you know, America. Some of you may have heard of, you know, Jack Ma. Jack Ma was founder, CEO, founder and CEO of Alibaba, a Chinese company equivalent to Amazon here. Jack Ma, he disappeared for a few months, just towards end of 2020, because he criticized the financial system and banking system of China. And then, you know, leaders, they heard it and they didn't like it. And so he was, you know, disappeared. So my point here is, I think, you know, high-rise buildings, fast, you know, trains, high-speed air nets, it doesn't, you know, makes a big difference. What differentiates, you know, us here in America, it is we have, you know, something that they don't have. And that, to me, it is the freedom and democracy that we have here, and it's something that, you know, we have to protect it and we need to preserve it and pass it to the next generation. So freedom and democracy, it's something that, you know, we have to protect it from, you know, local communities, people like us in small communities. And hopefully, we can pass this, you know, voice of protecting our freedom and democracy. So hopefully, it would echo in our chamber of, you know, our Congress and, you know, in Washington DC. So that's what, you know, is my motivation is, to promote, you know, these three concepts. And I believe, you know, we can preserve and protect, you know, freedom through unity. Unity is the key for us, you know, to go, you know, forward. And the more we, you know, put politics aside and focus on the problems and fixing, you know, taking care of, you know, people's, you know, problem is, you know, is, that's what, you know, people want. And with that, I want to thank, you know, everyone here, I want to thank Spokane Talks and Sulani and every one of you being here. And hopefully, we will have, you know, another episode of, you know, Beyond Politics in some times, you know, soon. And I hope, you know, everyone have a great evening. Thank you.